Okay. And Rudy, why don't you bring us some quick news? Now can you straighten these out?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberated and just as for all.
All right, so you gotta wait, you waited by the paper.
Well, he missed it, there it is. Okay. All right, we have our appointments and we have Michael Wright from Calix Ambulance Service Update.
Where should I come? Let me just pass out some paper here. So this, as I did the last time I came, I think it was right at the, was it the beginning of April or end of March, I think a month in we came. And as you can see by these numbers, we've almost doubled our volume since when I last recorded and it's been climbing, kind of since dropped off a little bit for October there, but basically gradually going up, 61, 70, 88, 99, 104, 108, 117, and then September 112.
These are the calls, Mike.
And these are total responses to all Littleton, Sugar Hill, and Easton, obviously the majority being Littleton. And then further broken down, basically kind of at the bottom as far as actual transports, patients being transported to a destination is a little over 500 and a little bit, you know, about 200 or so no transports. So our no transports is still pretty high. We are still yet to kind of get with Twin State to try to change the concept of responding to all the motor vehicle accidents. Again, as I said before, that it's kind of a trend, seems like in New Hampshire unlike Vermont, that an ambulance responds to all requests for the motor vehicle whether there's injury or not, but it's our kind of policy on the Vermont side anyway to only respond to those that have injury and we're still working on that to maybe change that response situation to those that are unknown or confirmed injury. And then we've done a total of 76 non-emergency transports that includes Lafayette Center in Franconia as well as requests out of Littleton to go from Littleton to Lafayette or another facility, Dartmouth or CMC down in Concord, all of those being non-emergent and then 32 of those being emergent and 16 of those, excuse me, 15 of those being paramedic requested transports being the most critical transport.
Can I go back to what you were talking about before?
Sure.
Where does the policy to go to a scene of an accident even when there, when it's confirmed that there are no injuries come from, where is that?
That's a very good question. I haven't really figured that out as far as it's, I guess it's just a standard from the dispatch center in Grafton County that sends all the ambulances in that system to responses.
Geez, we should be, that seems like a good idea.
It is, and again, we're working with them. Chief and I have a meeting, we've kind of bounced back and forth trying to get a meeting together so that the three of us can sit down and talk about that. I hope by the next time I report to you that that'll be changed and we can reduce that.
Okay, let us, I mean, I don't think there's, I'd have to guess if there's nobody on this board that thinks that everyone should be getting called out whereas it's confirmed that there are no injuries, that just seems absolutely absurd.
Right, absolutely.
So that's that 134.
Well, it's not all of them because this could be medical situations if some elderly, you know, person falls down and they call 911 and we get there and they were not really injured, they just needed assistance, then that's included into those. So it's, but a lot of those, not a lot of those, but some of those in that, in those numbers are the motor vehicle accidents. Obviously, we're not doing, you know, hundreds of motor vehicle accidents in our service area, but I would guess around, I could, we could further break that down to classifying those down to motor vehicle accidents, but if we did, if I'd guess, I would say about 20 or 30 of those were probably motor vehicle accidents. Because, and again, some of these are just simple things on Main Street, you know, kind of little fender bender things where, you know, we get called out and there's no, again, no injury and that creates a chart and a response, so we're hoping to reduce those. So that's basically the overall run volume then. On the last page is further broken down just to give you an idea of kind of timeframes and days of the week and based on this currently from the start to now, Monday and Fridays are busiest, actually Thursday by a little bit, Monday and Thursday are busiest days. And nine to noon and noon to three block is kind of our busiest timeframes and that's statistically pretty much any service. You know that the peak times or daytimes in St. J when we did ran the data, that's why we put on our backup crew and our transfer crew during nine to five because that's our peak, peak time. So that's our volume. Other things that we've, some initiatives and some things that we've tried to get some community involvement on, we've, the last couple months we were involved in the Lowe's and Home Depot Safety Fair, we did the Halloween Walk just recently this month in October and also for many years, as long as I've been on Calix for 20 years and I think all 20 years and even maybe several years before I started, we did a, we did trick or treating, put the ambulance on Main Street and did some safety information. We've kind of moved to doing glow sticks because we found that that was well received and lit all the kids up around the community, so we did that this year. Unfortunately, right in the beginning, they got a response, so they did have to leave, but they came back and gave out 150 glow sticks in about an hour. So they said they probably could have given out another 100 had they not got the response, but that was well received. And we also are participating regularly in safety meetings at Littleton High School and we have been heavily involved with the guys at the firehouse when they go around and do their building inspections, the ambulance crew goes with them to be familiar with buildings and layouts and streets, again with our crews, some of them being new to the area, that's helped out a lot and doing, again, kind of that team approach of working with the fire guys. Just in general, things from my perspective as a manager has just been unbelievable, the response that we've had from community people, patients that we've transported, almost weekly get calls from community residents, both Littleton, Sugar Hill, and Easton, of good things that we've done. Just one in particular, Sugar Hill resident that the crews identified was having a major heart attack, they called DART right to the scene in Sugar Hill and flew the guy directly down to Dartmouth. He had 100% occlusion of one of his coronary arteries and is now back home doing really well. So things like that make me very happy as a manager, very good clinical decisions, got lots of comments of our professionalism, of our uniform and how crews are presenting themselves on the scene. Our involvement with LRH has been unbelievable, they've been very supportive of us, we've not been able to staff very few transfers, we've pretty much hit the need there. There's obviously been some peak days that we've been busy on both sides and we have had to turn away a transfer, you know, a non-emergency transfer, but for the most part, we've hit all the responses and have been working with them and providing them a paramedic when they need to on these, on the what they call PIF transfers. And lots of, again, non-emergency trips that they need to get out of Littleton. Beginning, as we talked about early in the beginning, we were rolling out our subscription program, it's not quite ready, so I couldn't bring the kind of final layout, but I did just kind of as a, kind of a review basically, bring out what will be going out in December to all the residents in Littleton, Sugar Hill, and Easton. Essentially, it is, this is last year's version, but basically it's a subscription service that we offer that essentially is for emergency transports only and the cost is for a single person is $35, a senior citizen is 25, senior citizen couple is 45, and a household, complete household is $50. And that basically covers, we bill the insurance company and if there's a deductible and as we all know, lots of these insurance plans are getting high deductibles now, this, by having the subscription, it waives that deductible. So we've been very successful with this and this will be going out to the mailings, we obviously have been doing it on the St. J side for a while, but this will be going out in December to all the residents on this side.
That's tax exempt.
Yes.
As a subscriber?
Yep. So that'll be coming out, we did a nice little, you know, this one was last year's, our little, we did a transport to a local airport in Montpelier, so we kind of used this photo, the photo that we're using this year is our ambulance with the Vermont sign and the Hampshire sign and it kind of blends in really nice, it came out really well. The other thing, well, two updates, Milt is officially on our board as a voting member now with the bylaws changed, we're very happy and been pleased with Milt on our board, it's been a lot of fun to have on our, on our monthly meetings and it's been a tremendous help for us.
Sure.
And...
You'll get older then.
Right. But he's been great. And the other thing that we wanted to just mention that I pushed, as I became the chief here, that we hadn't done, we have not done for the years of Calix Ambulance is any sort of fundraising. We are a nonprofit organization, we are not for profit as some of the other services and the one that was serving previously, we're a nonprofit organization and a big part of that is fundraising. And we're just starting, we just started rolling out this month as we're doing a 50-50 raffle to purchase and upgrade some laptop computers for our electronic documentation. And beginning May, I think it's the second week of May, which is EMS week, we're going to roll out a letter to all the, we're going to use the subscription mailing and put out a letter looking, requesting for donations to update our oldest ambulance, which is housed actually in Littleton as a replacement, and we're going to target that for, as a bigger fundraiser that'll go out to businesses and community. And the board has been working very hard at coming up with some other ideas to just do maybe two or three different smaller ones and then maybe a bigger one annually. And obviously, by doing some of these fundraisers keeps our appropriation requests down and not having to come back hopefully to the town to ask for an increase if we can help with some of this, you know, the capital of the bigger ticket items which are, you know, big pieces of medical equipment, monitors, instructors, et cetera, and ambulances. So that we will be rolling out again at the EMS week in May. Again, the integration with Littleton Fire has been phenomenal, the crews interact with them, obviously they're living in the, in the firehouse, working with them, house chores, cleaning, training. We are starting to work with Littleton Regional about trying to do some more regional type training, they hired a new person coordinator up there, they used to do it for years back and we're trying to work with them as well to try to provide some training for not only our staff, but regionally all the services in the outline communities that may not have an opportunity to have some professionals that present some material on a monthly or bi-monthly basis, so we're starting to hopefully by, by January to get that, get that rolled out.
Any questions?
Take any questions?
No, I just, I wanted to say that I also have heard some good reports, Michael, about the, about the professionalism of your crew.
Thank you.
So we appreciate that. And I also heard that if one of us was lying by the side of the road dying, you're the guy that we want to have show up. So would you just be on duty all the time, please?
I'll see, I'm pretty much am. On this side, I'm not so much, but...
It is a wee bit of a concern, but that's it.
As a hospital trustee and sitting on the board, I obviously stay close to the emergency staff when we have our monthly medical quality meeting and you do very well with them and they with you, I guess, it's just a big work celebration. Right. I guess I had a question, is there anything that the three of us or that the town of Littleton needs to think about in terms of your service as it goes forward? In talking about being a nonprofit, you know, when I started coming to the board meetings, it struck me right away that there's obviously this need, as with all nonprofits, to generate some activity. And in St. John'sburg area, they've done this for a number of years now. I guess one of the projects that you kind of alluded to is building a new ambulance, selling a fender or selling a horn or parts of the ambulance and that may be something. One thing that they've talked about which I took interest in, and there's a hot dog stand that I may in fact be staffing at some point this summer on Main Street, if you see that, now you understand why that could happen. But anyway, we are, as a board, yeah, anyway, Frank, we are thinking about going forward and this is something obviously the people in this community just need to think about and be aware of.
Sure.
As stated, because in the past, we've always had a private for-profit operation and that was fine.
Yep.
But this is clearly a different situation.
Sure.
Financial standpoint, so.
Right. And the little hot dog stand I was referring, we, in the last, September 19th, I guess, we've started another contract of servicing a service that Danville Rescue was not far from our St. John'sburg location and they had done a lot of big fundraisers and used that stand, french fries and hot dogs and stuff and have done really well and we're hoping to kind of roll out that, that same concept as well, to do that at events and get our folks out in the community. I actually worked on it at the Autumn on the Green that they do every year and Danville was a lot of fun to see the residents and be able to do that, so it's definitely something that we're, we've never really had initiative to do, but now we're going to start kind of doing that, so.
Dan, you have a question?
Yeah, you mentioned a $35 fee?
Yes.
For...
Single.
For what is it for, just to go out there or to transport somebody?
No, basically it would cover if you were transported, so you would pay that, it'd cover you for the year.
Okay.
And then if you were transported and, you know, we would bill your insurance if there was a deductible, it would be waived because now you're a subscription member.
Right, and the reason I ask is, you said it was $25 for an elderly?
Yes.
What if the person, what if the elderly person is well-to-do, a millionaire, you still only charge him $25?
Yep.
That doesn't seem right.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
Anything that you can think of that you need to say to us is select one.
No, Dan, thank you for your support and if there's anything, I mean, we keep on a regular basis, so if there's any, I guess the one thing would be any other, I guess any other, we had one of our crew members kind of researched the whole public event stuff where we can get out there into the community, so if you guys know of events that are coming up, that you'd like an ambulance there or think it would be a good idea for us to have a presence, then, you know, get back to Milt or Fred to email us because we'd love to get out into the community more and more.
Okay, citizens' concerns.
Mike, tell us a question. I asked last year about Cannon Mountain, are you planning on doing any responses?
We are in discussions with them, there's, we're not sure where that's going yet, there seems to be an interest of us at least being on the next in as a backup because right now it, we're kind of third or fourth in, which is a little bit concerning to me because there has been some situations which have delayed patient care by going to these other services, so we're working with them to try to meet that need.
You asked my question.
Yep.
You're in discussions.
Yep.
Any citizens' concerns? Ryan?
Mike, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Okay.
Today, as you well know, Ray Burton passed away and I'd love to have you as the chairman of the board of selectmen say a few words about Ray, for what he means to the community, what he's done for us, and then also to leave us in a moment of silence on the completion of your words.
Well, I've known Ray probably for, when I said I have known Ray, it's hard to speak of him in the past tense, but the, for at least 20 years and I think a lot of people here have known him for a whole lot longer, and he has, I got to tell you, is he remembered everything that I told him that I, when I was in the legislature and, you know, he would, he was always good when it came to feedback, but he was like that with everybody, it didn't make any difference. If you needed something, you could, you could call him, I've still got him on speed dial, so, and, but you could call him and you could get an answer and if you needed material from the state or something like that, it was there within the week. He's going to be missed, I don't know if there's going to be anyone that can come anywhere near to fill in one of his shoes, but we, over at the office, we put the flag down at half-staff today, I don't know what the rest of the state's doing, but that's what we did. And I, anybody here else has anything to say, he's going to be truly missed.
I'd like to say something. I think that in a time that politicians are looked on with such suspicion and so frequently such well-deserved suspicion, that Ray Burton was a politician who really stood out as being somebody that was, that did what he was supposed to do in a way that no other politician I've ever met has ever done before. He, he didn't care who you were, he didn't care what you had or didn't have, he didn't care what party you were from. People who called Ray Burton got help with the issues that they needed help with and yeah, I agree, he'll be, he'll be very missed in this, in this community and in the, you know, in his district and outside of his district undoubtedly because he was really a good and effective public servant.
I recall when we moved up here 40 years ago in next August, Ray sent us a letter. At that point, he wasn't a politician, I think he was the head of a small publishing company back in 1973, 1974. And he stayed in contact with my wife and I over the years, meaning when he became a politician, but clearly as Marty said, among those who are in the political ranks, he was clearly respected and there's not a whole lot that are consistently, so.
I'd call for a moment of silence.
And I think that Ray would want us to resume our work, just as he resumed his.
A thought to recognize the contributions to Ray, Robert Black will call me today as he did many other people and he said, "What's Ray done for Littleton?" And I said, "Well, just about every community and economic development mission..."
Where's the guy been?
It was, it was a question of the breadth, not the whether he did it or not, that Ray's fingerprints were on. Something I think the board should consider along with possibly even better ideas and hopefully better ideas, is that Ray was really the responsible for the River Walk. The first, that was done in two phases, as you well know, the first phase, I believe, was $950,000 and it was the largest grant ever given to any community for an ICE-T project. It was followed up a year later with another $200,000 housing, which was, I think, finished up last year. So at least a thought for the selectmen to consider and hopefully there are other ideas, is that the bridge, the covered bridge would, I think, would be an ideal monument to Ray's contributions to Littleton and for you to consider that and hopefully reach out and there may be even some better ideas out there, I think it'd be something. Couple of the quick things, you're all invited to the Economic Development Celebration, Mike will be attending and doing the invocation, this is 3:30 next Thursday.
Actually, I can't do the invocation because I'll be on company time.
Okay.
I have to be very, very careful about the hats I wear.
Then you'll just do a welcome, yeah?
Very well. Okay.
I'll be 3:30 next Thursday here at the Opera House, I'm pitch hitting for Chad Sterns who had a prior commitment. It's the 21st Annual Economic Development Celebration and the focus is going to be on the River Walk. And 20 minutes have been set aside for four different speakers, Dave Ernstberger on the demonstration project, John Hennessy about the commission's good work, Steve LeFrance on the technical vision they've been putting together, and then Fred on behalf of the town as far as some of the challenges that will be addressed by the river, by the river project. So there'll be four speakers, that'll be the first segment after we get through the opening and then we'll go into the other ones. So it should be a very successful and upbeat presentation. Bob O'Connor will be running that over Thanksgiving weekend, so usually people between football and Turkey, sooner or later, they'll want to watch Channel 2 and so that'll be on.
Of course.
The other thing, at the last meeting, I asked about whether the board could take a position, I know you're not against it, but for the Earth Day designation and if Fred could announce that at that meeting, I think that would be helpful for that, that would kind of help get the ball rolling to do that, so if he could do that. And then the last thing, which I'll quickly give to you, the last meeting, I asked you to consider partnering with the Community House Board to develop a capital plan. I happened to go to a seminar last week and the legislature has given towns a new tool to be used to address community projects, you know, pass it out to you. It allows towns to vote, to do multi-year projects, but with annual appropriations. So basically what allows you to do, if you want to do a $300,000 project, but you want to do it, space it out over four years, you can vote once to allocate $75,000 a year for the four-year project, you don't borrow any money, but you commit for future appropriations. So it's a tool and it, the Community House to me would be an ideal facility to undertake something to do that and there may be other projects that's come along that this particular tool will allow annual appropriations, but without having to borrow any money. So I wanted to give that to you, so for your consideration going forward, because I think it could be very helpful and you caught my eye when I went to the seminar, so. Okay? Thank you very much.
Any other concerns? Dan?
Question of what Ryan said.
You want to speak up? I'm kind of deaf in both ears.
Yeah, and also Brian, speak up while Brian is still here.
Brian, you said annual appropriations without, I'm not sure if I have that right.
Peter.
It almost sounded like we could, the town could vote money to be taken from the taxpayers without appropriations, I didn't understand that, to be truthful with you.
The mechanics of it is that the selectman would, or by petition, but primarily through the selectman, would place a warrant article on the ballot. It would identify the particular project, how much would want to be raised over a period of time, the maximum, under legislation, the maximum time period would be five years, the selectman would have flexibility within that, and it would allow one vote. Now the vote, what is the actual taxpayer protection that you're concerned about, Dan, is that it would take a 60% vote because we are an SB2 town, so it's very similar to a bond vote for the same supermajority to pass it. The difference is you're able to appropriate the money without borrowing the money. See, in the past, anytime you had a multi-year appropriation, you had to get the 60% plus, borrow the money, pay the interest, and then pay for it. This is another tool, the taxpayers will have full authority whether to, they will be voting up or down on the project on the warrant article, so as far as the taxpayers go, they have the full... So as far as the taxpayers go, they have the full, uh, opportunity to say yea or nay, number one, on it, and it's up to, uh, the, the selectmen and department heads or whoever is, uh, in favor of the particular initiative, uh, to lay out the good policy reasons why it's a good idea or not. The taxpayers have the full authority to vote for it and the only, the, the real savings is that you don't have to pay interest on it. It's a, it's a short-term bond for a capital improvement plan, which again, will be voted on by the voters.
So, uh, but if I understand you right, um, it will be voted on once, even though uh, each year, the taxes will be taken out?
That's correct. If it's a three-year bond for a hundred thousand, then three-hundred thousand will be taken out over a three-year period.
Thank you.
And that would be, again, it's a decision with the supermajority by the voters, uh, and it's an additional tool to address, uh, capital improvements for a community.
Thank you.
Let's see, we have the DPW supervisor report.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity.
Would you introduce yourself?
Oh, by all means. My name is George McNamara. I was appointed, started my job three weeks ago and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity.
I'm sorry, what job is this?
Department of Public Works.
Department of Public Works.
And he's doing what?
He's the boss.
He's giving a monthly report.
Okay. So, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm, excuse me, uh, has he been hired? Is that what it was?
Yes.
So he's the...
He's the new head.
And what's her next place?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, in review, for some, some work we've just completed, we've, uh, completed Holland and Winter Sand, a little over three thousand yards we stockpiled from the last month. We had a library maintenance project we undertook with some workers. Uh, we replaced a section of sidewalk that was a hazard. We did some sealing around the foundation in this, in the sidewalk. We also pointed up the granite steps in the front of the sidewalk. Last week, we paved the rear parking lot. We didn't actually pave, but we oversaw a subcontractor that paved the rear parking lot of the library as well.
Can I just jump in on that?
Yeah.
The pavement is, the library's money's. The work for the sidewalk and, and walkway, um, was written up as, with our Primex insurance carrier, as a tripping fall hazard, so we wanted to take care of that before winter.
Thank you. Some of the other projects we've been working on, we recently paved, patch paved, if you will, to, uh, strengthen up some of the old coal patch and the, uh, oh, excuse me, it escapes me, the type of paving.
Chip seal.
The chip seal paving that was used on our Grandview. Uh, we did that and we did Slate Ledge as well, which is another chip seal road. We're experiencing a lot of failures with all the roads that are chip sealed. Chip seal, of course, doesn't hold up as well and lasts as long as pavement does, but we did some repairs on both of those roads with a little of the money we had left over in our paving budget. Uh, we just completed our culvert inspection. For those of you that don't know, the crews go out and they go do their own plow route and they inspect, physically inspect every culvert and they stake it. We started the culvert cleaning during the inspection. They write up the culvert if it needs to be cleaned out, if it's full of sediment or if it's deteriorated, and that also helps us in our improvements in the following year. We're in the process of cleaning culvus. Of course, we didn't clean culvus today because it was kinda cold and icy and things like that. Vehicle winter preparation is for the most part completed. We have a couple items that we're still working on, but we do have a, at this point, we have all the roots covered. The equipment auction, one of the things that we're, uh, doing around the yard when I first showed up, I noticed there was a lot of clutter and it's one of the things that just kinda gets overlooked a lot. We've pulled out five or six pieces of equipment, one being an old truck, uh, the old culvert cleaning steam device, a air compressor, a couple homemade rudimentary wagons, trailers, if you will. We're serving two purposes. We're gonna clean up the area and we're gonna put them out to public auction. And the reason I decided to do that was rather than just take it for the metal salvage, some of them may have some interest to somebody, a community. We're gonna add the paper. If we get any action on it, that's fantastic. If we don't, we'll just scrap the sale. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading my own stuff under the lights we have.
Do you wanna borrow my reading glasses?
Oh, goodness gracious. I wish I had mine. I looked at the truck already. Those are some of the things we've been doing, uh, and some of the other, that's the crews been doing that. One of the things I recently did was I reviewed the winter policies and I think you have winter policies.
In clement weather.
In clement weather, winter policy.
Plowing and sanding, winter's policy.
We really didn't make any changes on there from what you had last year. We cleaned up some of the language and we, uh, kept the same format. One of the things I did wanna point out to you, though, was our priority list, which I, I feel is important. Uh, we reviewed this with the police department and I reviewed this with my former Ed Parker. And it's on page four. The, the priority for the plowing of the roads starts with the school bus routes. We then move to the town roads and then we get the sidewalks. The sidewalks also go in a similar priority. Our priority with the sidewalks is we concentrate around the schools, we get the walking routes, we get Main Street, and then we pick up the side streets. You know, today was a perfect example. We, we had a bunch of calls today and the, the good thing about the calls, they came in, when I asked where they were, they weren't one of our priorities. They were further down the list and I explained, and everybody that called actually was very good about things, uh, which I'm sure you're gonna get this, you know, throughout the winter, but I think it's important that the people do understand that's the priorities that we've, we've chosen.
George, can I just digress for a minute? I mean, I think one of the issues this, this morning was being the first storm of the season, uh, and it was a very patchy storm, so...
I didn't know it was a storm.
Well, right. Um, so some places, you know, were quite, quite slippery and other places you couldn't tell at all. So finding those places was, was one issue, but the other is, as you get long in the winter, there's a residual, uh, salt and sand on the roads, which tends to help. It's that first, first storm of the season that, uh, everything sticks and surprises everyone.
And no snowbags to bumper your, your departure from the main roads.
No, in the, in the back of this policy, it does explain about road obstructions and the, the biggest road obstruction that comes to mind are mailboxes and it talks about, and I'm mentioning this for people, this, this policy is available on the town's website for people to go and review. I, I don't wanna bore everybody going over every detail because it's... The part in the back, it talks about the mailboxes and it also talks about the town right-of-way. You know, as many people know, people creep their mailboxes out and they are in the right-of-way. Probably the first five feet of a lot of lawns are actually in the right-of-way. Uh, you know, and it brings awareness to that. That, that was one other thing I wanted to mention about that policy. Is there any questions on the policy or...
What?
My, my, my question is, uh, last year we adopted this November twelfth, um, but other, some years it hasn't been adopted until December. Um, it is essentially unchanged from previous years. If you, uh, care to act on it tonight, that would be great, but we can also bring it back at the November twenty-fifth meeting if we'd like additional time to review it.
Well, I move, uh, I mean, if everybody's okay with voting on it tonight, are you okay with it milked?
Yeah.
So I move that we, um, what?
Accept it.
That we re, that we re-adopt the, uh, weather and clement, with winter and clement weather policies and priorities.
Second, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
George, I have a, a comment regarding West Main Street, two, two West Main Street issues. Under, uh, under this policy, the, uh, the school being top priority of the school routes, uh, bus routes, also, and if, and this isn't really a criticism, it's just the way it happens, the sidewalk plow will, from Beale House going west, around that slight soft curve, um, will plow and then the state plow will come by. This is when we have some snow and knock it all back in. And I notice the kids have to walk out into the street because some of the chunks are quite large. You know, I don't know if this was, has been addressed in the past, but that particular street from the Beale House going west, um, around that curve, one plow works against the other plow and, uh, some, he'll come back later and, and plow plowed again perhaps or not, but kids have already wound up wanting to go out into the street because, um, it's not an easy passage. So it's just something to, to think about in terms of when the snow...
They go up and down that street a lot simply to refill the sander, you know, maybe it's...
Yeah. It's, it's a plow situation and it's a scheduling of a sidewalk plow to a, a road plow. The other issue is the West Main Street retaining wall, and I think I brought that up to you a few weeks ago. There, there's that gap. Now, there's not many of us that walk that street or are on that street, but where the orange fencing comes down, um, if, once they start plowing, if there's snow there, it's just blocking, but it's now a drop-off. And I don't know if there's anything else you can do there. I mean, clearly it's, everybody's aware of the fact that there's an opening there, you know, dropping down three feet or so. But once the snow comes and if there's some plowing and it builds up, it's not that there's anything holding that snow up. So that's why I raised the question regarding, uh, for this winter, any way to alert people to the fact that that sidewalk ends and there's a drop and of course, the orange fencing is sitting right above it.
That's something we need to concentrate on and keeping the snow pushed to the road and maybe having to make, make an extra cleanup with a load of loaders in good proximity just around the corner in that area. Keep that area cleaned out well. I made a note of that. I'll mention to the guys.
Otherwise, the policy's fine. Thank you.
Some of the new things we're working on, uh, our biggest thing we're actually working on right now, or I'm working on with the, uh, grad committee, is we just sent out a request of qualification from contractors. The committee had decided to, uh, make an attempt at this route. I threw a couple copies up there. I don't know if you people had a chance to look at them. It's kind of dry reading, but basically what we've done is we've put a ad in the newspapers and we've also sent an email to about ten different contractors. So it is open to everybody. It's not a, uh, private solicitation. And the requests for qualifications, we've asked them for their qualifications as a contracting company. We've also asked them for a concept on what their ideas of what would work well. We've given them a basic outline for the, uh, facility needed. And we've actually added into requests for qualifications, which you don't do a lot, is a, uh, estimated budget price. And that, we thought that would, uh, number one, help narrow down some of the people for the prospective, uh, contractors, but we thought it also would help the board better see how much something like this is gonna cost. It'd help them be, uh, better prepared to present to the voters if we do decide to present to the voters this year, which I think that's what we're leaning towards. Uh, that's due on the twenty-first, I believe, and then promptly the board will select a few of the, uh, companies and decide, have them back for a short meeting and pick a company to go with for a request for proposal. And at that time, they will present conceptual drawings as well, but with a much better contracted price, not a contracted price, but a much better prospective price to, uh, take to the voters, something that we, they feel they can sell to the voters and, uh, provide them with a new facility. So there's, uh, we put that on the table there if you have to look at.
And the deadline is, uh, the twenty-second, uh, new. Uh, and then this Thursday, at ten o'clock, uh, at the DPW garage would be a, a walkthrough. So any of these contractors that wanna come up and physically see the project and have an opportunity to ask questions, uh, will be coming up day after tomorrow.
And I guess that's it for now. Any questions?
Ready?
Yeah, we'd like to ask a question. Do this solicitation, it's limited just to the contract in Hampshire?
Nope, no, it's, it's open to, we have, we actually send it to...
It's open to Maine and...
Maine and Vermont, yes. It's, it's open to any state, actually.
To, I'm sorry if I asked you, the chairman would... Do this is, uh, by the law, that they're supposed to send the solicitation all over the United States or...
I think that we generally do that anyway. We're looking for the best price that we can get.
Even if it's outside of the limit?
We're not restricting it to this general area here. That doesn't, the, the smaller the, the, the smaller the area you restrict it to, the less likely you are to get a competitive price of all. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, very good. And, you're up. Very good.
Or is that at the end of the Public Works Department's? You know what, I'd like to, sorry, Fred, to jump in front of you. I was going to, uh, make a motion to sponsor the Earth Day cleanup in two thousand fourteen and to link it to the River Walk and to, and to, uh, have the town participate in organizing a community-wide river cleanup for the Earth Day, since the Highway Department is frequently, has to be involved in our cleanup.
Sorry, George.
I just wanted to make sure that you know that it's coming.
It's funny you mention that because I, I think I was thinking about all kinds of different things this department could get involved in. I can remember being a little boy in elementary school, running around with the highway workers on a Saturday in the class that filled the most, got trash roadside in the truck. They, I don't know what they want. We wanna pass the movie theater or something, but I mean, it was, you know, it was something of that. I didn't even know if that stuff still existed, you know, nowadays with the...
It does. It has sort of off and on and, and we get the, those blue bags, the...
The transfer station manages that.
Transfer station will have those.
Of course not.
And, yes, that's right. So Brian knows too. But the Highway Department is generally, we, we count on you to pick up the, the bags. So we tell people, "You fill the bags, but all you have to do is put them in a safe place and off the side of the road and the Highway Department will pick them up."
Absolutely.
Um, so, just to break you in, so that you know that...
That's good, 'cause I don't know if you don't tell me. That's very good.
And so I, I just looked at my calendar and I see that April nineteenth and April twenty-sixth are the, are the two dates that are closest to, to Earth Day this year. I, we can't really pick a date on this, at this time, but if, if we're all in agreement that we want to, to, uh, work on that.
Should we take, uh, we want to make the motion official.
So I move that we have the town sponsor an Earth Day cleanup, link it to the River District and a community-wide river cleanup for sometime late April two thousand fourteen.
Second motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. All right.
Now, Fred.
Thank you. Uh, I believe last meeting, uh, Jackie King, uh, came in and, uh, farewell, for the farewell to, uh, retirement, um, and I have since appointed Brian Patnow, uh, former lead attendant to the, uh, transfer station manager position. And we have Brian here tonight with us, so if you have any questions of recycling or trash, uh, the expert is here.
A little trash talk.
Trash talk.
Let's try and stump him if we can. What is the price of steel right now?
Uh, we haven't shipped any out lately. Um, it is going up a little. Um, last time I checked, it was around one-seventy a ton. One-seventy.
So then just in case you can't find buyers for...
I didn't know if you were trying to calculate your bid on a machine. It's a power machine.
Has he been out weighing stuff?
There's always like this, and how many beans are in the jar, which doesn't really weigh.
Congratulations, Brian.
Yes, congratulations, Brian.
Thank you. And Brian, do you have any, a couple things you might wanna say?
Yeah, um, just a couple notes. Um, first, our winter hours are in effect. On Wednesdays during the summer, we're open from twelve to six, for the winter, we're open from twelve to four. Couple other things, um, starting January first, um, we won't be, uh, we won't be able to burn any clean construction and demolition debris anymore, meaning two-by-fours, stuff like that. We can still burn crates and pallets, um, so unfortunately, that's gonna hurt quite a few. a few. So we're going to have to decide on a cutoff, which we'll post probably late December, so that way we'll be able to burn it up before the beginning of the year.
That's not a town sponsor.
Yeah, that's a state.
Before you leave that subject, you're saying that you can burn some wood, but not other wood?
Yeah.
What is the reason why?
Oh, they're.
Yeah, long story. It's, we won't be able to burn construction and demolition debris before, you know, clean, untreated, unpainted, you know, like a two-by-four. We're able to burn right now because it's just wood. You know, after January 1st, we won't be able to burn anymore.
Even clean wood?
Even clean wood.
We'll just turn them into pallets and lid crates.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that because they have to be recycled or something or?
Nope, they'll be going into the landfill.
The construction bin and a higher cost to the user and to the town. And I think the reason is that the state figures that some plywood or painted or treated construction material was making its way into the burn pile, and this is the safest way to assure that no pressure-treated, no plywood, or no wood that once had paint on it that may have chipped off or something gets burned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Ray.
Tax rate update. We.
We're all writing it down this time, right?
Well, it's all written down here for you. So, you can pass out. So we did take the action from the selectman's meeting last Thursday and channeled it to Department of Revenue Administration. I think really the most important thing is the bottom right-hand corner, which is, this is still stamped unofficial. We should get our official rate tomorrow, at which time we can then start factoring bills. But, so the town rate is going to be $7.37. The town will be $1.26. The school, local school, will be $11.29, and the state will be $2, the state school will be $2.45 for a total of 22.40. My guess is that when we get it final, it'll be rounded down to 22.40, but I can't guarantee that they won't round it up, even be one tenth of a cent, they won't round it up to 22.41.
22.40,000, right?
Yes. 22.40,000, and you flip that over, the backside, that gives your overlay and fund balance. The overlay that we requested was 150,000. The limit would have been 8.54, and the fund balance, I think we've been through all this, but the 5% would be 946,000, and the GFOA recommends 17%. At 17%, it would be 3.2 million.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think that's likely to happen in this community.
Ever.
And then, so the, take the 8.56 was the grossed fund balance, take away the amount that was dedicated for foreign articles of the 136, take away the 300,000 that you voted to apply to reduce the tax base from the undesignated fund balance, and that leaves the 420,000 and $18 as our retained unreserved fund balance.
What is the tax rate now before the 22.40? Six becomes in, comes into?
21.07.
Is that somewhere on here? Or you just know?
Yeah, it is. It's in that, the box, the far right-hand corner that I just went down.
21.07?
Go to the, the box immediately to the left, yes. Those are the former rates.
22, 21.07?
Yeah. Comments? So I think that, you know, tax bills should hit the street shortly before Thanksgiving is our, is our goal.
Do you need us to sign this?
Actually, I already did.
Okay.
We sent it in. There wasn't any changes from what we agreed to, so. So Rails to Trails update, I've deferred that discussion to the November 25th board meeting. You won't be there, Margie, I don't believe.
No.
But Chris Demasch from the Niantic Trails Bureau wanted to come up, and he was originally scheduled, but then had a conflict and just didn't seem to be that high a priority, so I'd rather have him here and try to get some of the parks commissioners here to talk about the Rails to Trails upgrade, update, and the grant that we will submit by this Friday to help fund that. And that's it.
All right, any, let's see.
Did you hear from Pat Norman today?
I did. And I haven't had a chance to get back to her. I will get back to her tomorrow. I know there's another grant deadline for the community.
Yeah, she said she's got one ready to go, just needs to.
Okay, so we, next area of discussion is board appointments. And I think Selectmen Brats may have something on this. Were you to pick up a resignation letter?
I did. I got a letter from Steve Kelly from Stan Philly, and he did resign for health reasons, and I gave it to Steve.
To the Budget Committee.
From the Budget Committee, yeah.
Okay, so that leaves us with eight right now in the Budget Committee. So we're looking to fill that nice position, so.
Yeah, and we did agree that we would post, I think last meeting, we would post in the newspapers, so now we can go ahead and do that if we want to. Mrs. Coleman Avery's been going to meetings, but to make this, not legitimate, but our past practice would be to post it. So bring this back maybe in our next meeting as fill in that vacancy.
And I have one other announcement on that. I was contacted that Bill Latulip would like to be added to the Energy Committee, too. So perhaps that's some.
To the Energy?
The Energy Committee.
Energy Conservation.
Energy Conservation Committee.
And as long as we're on the topic of that, at least we have brought up the name of it, I just wanted to mention to anybody who's here who's interested that tomorrow, wait a second, is today Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday is today.
Yeah, Tuesday is today. Today is Tuesday. Tomorrow at the White Mountain School, there is an energy of biomass, specifically biomass workshop, biomass use, biomass conversion, I don't know exactly what the name of it is, but there's a, there's a workshop that I believe starts at 1:00.
Yeah, 1:00 to 4:00, I believe.
And goes until 4:00 and has several, there are several presenters, and it's talking about use of wood pellets and wood chips for heating.
There's an internet.
If anybody wants to go, what, ready?
Yeah, I read the internet about the meeting.
Yeah. And it's free.
Free is good.
Free is good. And anybody who wants to go can attend.
I noticed, oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, and Ed Boynton resigned from the planning board, too.
Yeah, so let's list that position also posted.
Anything else under whole business? New business? Anything?